That's life.
Property values have increased almost eight percent. So when the property appraiser said, maybe you should consider lowering your, and I attended the workshop at the property appraiser, three percent? Well, this is why. Because you're getting 1.3 million more in property taxes without even increases, increasing your taxes. Well, I know that utilities, groceries, your FPL, everything costs us more. We all know that. At the end of the day, if you realign your budget, you're going to find funds to at least meet the two months' gap, general exceptive counseling principles for your reserve, which I agree you need to have in place. However, I'd like to bring something out. Your building department has almost 2 million in reserves. It's a special revenue fund. My family this year has contributed over $2,000 in permits. You know, when you have all this extra reserve, maybe it's time to lower revenue fees, permit fees. But that's just my observation. Nobody sat, asked me to sit and review the budget. I did speak with Councilwoman Ruano because some of the document, numbers on this budget document, I think are not accurate. I'll give you another example. You have $170,000 for speed humps. I am really upset that in May, you had my neighbors here ask for speed humps on Palmetto Palm. Sorry, Mayor.
I'd like to move to extend the time.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, seen none, the motion passed.
As you know, I live in the intersection of Palmetto Palm.
It'll be afforded to everybody else.
Thank you, Mayor Sid. I live in the intersection of Palmetto Palm. Councilmember Ruano clearly said, when you put the speed humps, make sure that that direction gets put on the bottom of the list. Well, wow, within 90 days, Palmetto Palm had speed humps on both sides. If that's not selective, what is? So if you're gonna, if that's the way you're going to continue to work, we're going to lose, we're going to continue to lose our faith in you. And I say this because I saw Homero Cruz, who I really don't really speak with. And I got kind of an earful. I did not know people knew I lived in that area. But he was right. There's residents who you've put to the back burner and chosen to serve others first. I also looked at your current year budget. You did have money left over for road repairs. You had money left over for pressure cleaning. I can go on because I've gone through, I've gone through both documents. And I really believe in actuals and encumbrances and all that kind of stuff. You only have three days to go. So you should be, you should have had a reconciliation for this meeting of what that three-day gap was. And I didn't see it in the agenda. But I want to say something to you. And I know that Jeremy is here. And Jeremy is awesome. I contact the town via residents. That's how I connect because some of the seniors just don't want to send, you know, do that little website thing that you have. And I'm sure some of you know Jose Enriquez. So the town did the cleaning of the park at Lake Champlain and Candlewood, okay? The town didn't do that good of a job. They left some of the two parts of the sidewalk very slippery. So senior citizen, longtime resident, Jose Enrique went out there to finish the job the town did not finish. That should not happen. The seniors should not be doing the job. And if our town is not having oversight, we have a manager, we have a deputy town manager, we have all these directors, somebody needs to make sure that the job gets done right. With that being said, I don't know if you know, Oliver fell trimming a tree and was in the hospital. And, you know, I remember us seniors helping seniors in the, back in the day. I think Marilyn knows her son helped put out shutters. If a senior needs help trimming a tree, why don't, why can't we help them? You know, instead of them falling and being in the hospital. The same thing with Jose Enrique. The town goes, and they just did this last week, by the way. And here he comes two days after. He reached the town and he said, well, I decided to do it because I didn't know when the town would get back to do it. I reprimanded him, you shouldn't have done it. I would have called, he didn't give me time to call Jeremy. Those are the things that you're not looking at or you're just choosing to ignore. And if this budget document, whether it's your financials, whether it's document, if you really don't take the time to digest it and find where the extra reserves, you have extra reserves, by the way. You have to look for it. Because Alex Ray would tell you. And you know, in this town, the historical surplus has existed, Mayor, since our administration changed. So Alex Ray, we didn't have these big numbers in reserves. We have them all over the place. Even if they're in a special revenue fund or they're in a designated capital improvement fund, they're there. Let's just do a little bit of homework and realign and make sure that our reserves are intact. So you don't have to keep on jerking around with the property tax. And please restore $250,000 back to the senior center fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Anyone else from the public?
Mayor, I don't see any participants online.
Public comments is closed. We'll definitely have, there's two public hearings. So I know, Chato, you wanted to speak again. So you'll have a chance to speak again a little bit later. It's an ordinance and second reading. We're on to item 6A. This is on the millage. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on item 6A, which is the millage rate adoption? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on ordinance adopting the millage rate for this upcoming year? Seeing none. Public comments is, the public hearing is closed for item 6A.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be reading now the ordinance. And then after I finish and conclude reading the ordinance, the manager will be reading a budget statement and putting it to the record. Remember that the conversation after I complete finish and the manager finishes needs to be focused on the millage exclusively. Afterwards, we will deal with the next item, which is the budget. This is an ordinance of the Town of Miami Lakes, Florida, adopting the millage rate of the Town of Miami Lakes for fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025, pursuant to section 200.065 of the Florida statutes, providing for direction to tax collector, providing for notice, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for effective date.
To put us in the proper posture, any motions?
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. For clarification, Mr. Attorney. I know we can't raise the millage, but we could lower it.
You can lower it. But before we entertain any motions, I believe that the manager needs to read the budget statement into the record.
The proposed millage rate for the Town of Miami Lakes fiscal year 2024-25 is 2.0732. This rate is the same as the current year. The gross taxable value for operating purposes The proposed millage rate will generate $9,634,854 in ad valorem revenue budgeted at 95% collection rate. The proposed millage rate of 2.0732 is 7.9% above the rollback rate of 1.9208.
All right, there's a motion. And in a second, I have a quick question to Melissa real quick, and I'm sure it's easy math. What would be, I know we voted no on the three percent. Just say we would, there would be a vote on a 1.5%, which would insulate our homesteaded properties at least half of their property taxes. How much would that be?
Can you give me a moment, too?
Yes.
So half of what the, I think before it was 289 or 290? So half of that, I think the last calculation was at three percent?
Melissa, and if you have a, if you have a formula ready to go to do that, the number that I had in mind was 2.6% reduction. So if you can get that number as well. And 2.6, please, thank you.
If you make a new.
So we're just on the millage. We, there was a motion and a second to move forward, to start discussion. And then the first question I asked, and then by the vice mayor just asked right now. That just happened right now. So there's been no, we're still on the millage, no vote, no, no, nothing yet.
So.
Yes.
I have the 1.5%.
Okay.
It would reduce the millage to 2.0421. And it would be about 144,532 less in ad valorem.
Got it.
The other one was a 2.6. Okay. The 2.6 would reduce the millage to 2.0193. And it would be 250,491 dollars less in ad valorem. So I'm going to repeat, the 1.5 would be 144,532 less. And the 2.6 would be 250,491 less in ad valorem.
Thank you. Any discussion, any further discussion, council, any other motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to set the millage at 2.0193. Mr. Mayor, point of order. My motion hasn't been voted on.
Your motion is the main motion.
Okay, was it a demand? Okay.
Yeah, that's your motion. I'll second. There's a motion and a second to do a 2.6% cut. Any discussion, council, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question for Melissa. Through the chair to our budget director, since you seem to have so many formulas and numbers out there, do you have the total number of parcels there? Because I'm just curious what that decrease in total budget would amount to if you were to spread it across the parcels, you know, what savings that amounts to?
The tough part there is, is there's different tax rates for different people. So if you, if you're, if you just bought your home, you know, you're in trouble, right? So if you've lived here for a long time, it's three percent. You're at, but yeah, the calculation will be interesting because everybody's different. Because it's not only homeowners, it's.
Yeah, it's just to get a general idea.
Business owners.
Also, for the record, I had a text message that they can't hear anything of this meeting. Whoever's watching online.
I T, please take note that the residents are saying that they can see the meeting, but they cannot hear. So please try to fix that immediately. Thank you.
Can you hear this okay? Well.
Can you hear me?
No. I think they gotta raise our volumes a little bit.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me in the audience or no?
Some of the residents are letting me know that YouTube stream is working perfectly. But to please speak into the microphone.
Got it. All right, sounds good. YouTube is, is working.
Okay. The total number of real estate parcels, which includes single-family homes, condominiums, multi-family, commercial, industrial, agricultural, vacant land, institutional, governmental, and other properties is a total of 10,378.
So that's roughly $25 per parcel.
Your question was asked, councilman, you answered. Councilman DeJesus, you're good? All right, Councilman Ron.
Yes, and I'm sorry because I had stepped away from, for a moment. Can you walk me through your thought process with this, with what you requested? Please forgive me because I just wasn't on the dais.
So my, my thought process behind the, behind the 2.6%. If you look at the information, the line item for the mayor, so by charter, the mayor's salary is set at a certain amount and then it increases by CPI. CPI, the CPI number that was used in that calculation was 2.6%, right? We're also, and this is later on for the budget conversation, also contemplating a COLA increase for our employees of 3%. So my, my idea kind of across the board is we, we match everything, right? So we give our employees 2.6% and we give the residents 2.6%. And to do that, we get, that's how we get to that 2.0193.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Wait, so what you're saying is to, to cut the 2.6% increase to council and mayor staff?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I think I didn't understand. What I'm saying is if, if, and it's really, it only has to do with the, with the mayor because that's what's tied to CPI, right? But if that's the CPI number, then let's use that CPI number that we're going to use across the board. Let's give that CPI increase to our, to our employees as a COLA. And let's give 2.6% worth of relief to our residents by way of a millage reduction. And that 2.6% millage reduction equates to the number that I just asked for from Melissa, which is the 200, it's a $250,000 reduction. And I have, I have some ideas on where in the budget to find that, but that's really secondary to this point. Yeah, the tough part for me is I, I want to rate or lower taxes as much as the next guy. But this is very difficult when we're trying to have a conversation exclusively about the millage and then excluding the discussion on the budget. Because without knowing how you plan on getting that money, I find myself struggling to support the item because I need a budget that's properly funded. But, you know, I'm open to hearing out the ideas. So reducing, reducing the COLA that's stipulated throughout the budget from 3% to 2.6% would result in a, you know, I'm going to make Melissa's head explode because it's in 60 different line items, is going to result in somewhat of a substantial reduction. And then the remaining part, whatever is left over. So I know, I know we kind of, and it was much the topic of discussion earlier, the $250,000 transfer from the senior center to the, to the sinking fund, right? To try to make the sinking fund whole. I think there's, there's a way to make the senior center build out whole from another funding source. So we can, we can restore that to the 500, not touch that. And then rather than transferring that full 250 from the senior center build out to the sinking fund, we transfer a smaller amount to make up for that difference. And then we commit to funding the rest of the amount on the sinking fund from whatever carryforward we have. Which, you know, I know that the number that was thrown about as a, as a potential projected surplus was around 70,000, I think. Prior, prior experience tells me that number will be higher, substantially higher.
All right, any further discussions on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the board.
So amendment by Vice Mayor Fernandez, seconded by Councilmember Garcia, motion for the millage rate to be set at 2.0193 rate, which is a reduction of 2.6 percentage. Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember DeJesus.
No.
Councilmember Goyazol.
No.
Councilmember Moreira.
No.
Councilmember Ruano.
No.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
Yes.
And Mayor Sid.
Yes.
So the motion does not pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll take one more swing at it. I wanted to make a motion to lower it to 2.0421. Is that correct, Melissa, the one and a half? 2.0421? Yeah. At first, I was not going, knowing the dynamics, I was not going to make a motion. But actually, after hearing the vice mayor's perspective, I think this is a no-brainer, lowering it to 1.5, to the 2.0421. 144, 532? Yep. So that's my motion. I'll second. Discussion, discussion.
Yeah, again, I think, you know, I, I'm also going to mimic exactly what my colleague said. You know, these are kind of hard issues to take. I think we all have been budget hawks. We've all kind of wanted to reduce tax. And I think, you know, I'd be, I'd be supportive of this position if I better understood where the money was coming from. And again, we go through these exercises in a workshop fashion where we try to hash these things out ahead of time, right? And then trying to do these things on the fly, I think is one of the things that sets us up for this type of situation, right? Where we don't necessarily understand. You know, maybe these things have just been thought up of. Maybe they're, came up with today. And being that the 70,000 shortfall is the smallest we've ever talked about. I mean, this is not six figures. 70,000 in a $21 million budget to be forecasted as surplus or deficit, right, if you want to talk about a percentage. It's a 0.00% of the budget. It's as fine-tuned as you can get a budget. So without necessarily undercutting ourselves, I just wanted to understand exactly, Mayor, if you were along the similar lines of the CPI, aligning the CPI with the COLA, or did you have different ideas for the 144?
No, initially, I had asked for the 1.5 and I said to myself, I'm not going to make a motion. And then I heard the vice mayor speak and I think it's beyond doable based on what he proposed. Even for what he said of the 2.6, it's even less at the, at the 1.5. I don't know if you want to repeat that, Vice Mayor, what?
I, I think, I think what he's asking is for the vice mayor to repeat the calculation that Melissa, I don't think is prepared to provide, which is what would be a 0.4 percentage COLA decrease in total salaries? Because if that's what we're, is that what we're talking about? That would be generating the surplus? So taking the COLA from 3% to 2.6? Yeah, no. And again, you know, we kind of do this and we have these workshop meetings so we can ask these questions, have staff be prepared. And unfortunately, you know, in the absence of that data, you know, until Melissa can kind of go through the budget, I'd feel more comfortable leaving it as is. But I'll be more than happy to hear everybody else's concerns and move through with it.
And I, I want to apologize to my colleagues. I had a, I had a meeting earlier this morning with the manager and Melissa to kind of go over final, you know, prepare before this meeting. And that was something that came up during that, that meeting. So just wanted to put that on your radar.
Reducing the COLA by 0.4% would then make it a 2.96. And what it would be saving the general fund is 1,549.
Point 3%, Melissa, sorry. Point, it's 0.3%. So it's to ta, it's to take it from 3 to 2.6. So it's a 0.4% reduction.
$15,491 going to a 2.6 COLA as opposed to the 3%.
I mean, I didn't, I'm not a, you know, nowhere close. I mean, I didn't, I'm not a, you know, nowhere close to to but fifteen thousand doesn't cover a hundred and forty-four thousand, uh Mayor, and and that's eh tha- that's the math that I was looking for, and I know that there's other opportunities in the budget, so I I mean, I'd be more than willing to continue to entertain them. Um um that reduction amounts to fifteen thousand.
Right, and then the the second eh funding source that I had identified was was the sinking fund, which we're currently funding at the highest level we've we've ever funded. Traditionally, we funded it somewhere between uh a hundred and fifty, I think we did, we might may have done two fifty one year. We're funding it right now at three sixteen, I believe.
Yeah, and I and I would completely be opposed to that as well, because we have historically also not funded it at all. And um what we have studied and what we've come back to from staff is that it's grossly underfunded, and we have dipped into that several times to fix ACs in community centers when they haven't been functioning. We dipped into it to funk to repair the AC system here. So I completely agree with continuing to fund that sinking fund at the rate that that we should, or else we're gonna run into a very similar situation that we're running to in Celebration Point. Unfunded items in the long run will end up costing us a lot more, and um that's exactly what's happened there in that community. Um and I'm I'm one of the people that's paying that 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 consequence right now. So I would not necessarily be in favor of of reducing the sinking fund. I am looking forward to other opportunities to maybe refunding the funds in the senior center through other um line items in the budget, um but I I can't support that that reduction at this time.
So I I was able to uh to to identify with with the town manager and with uh Melissa a line item to make uh the senior center eh whole. So my question to you is, have you identified any any other eh sources or or buckets that could be used? And then maybe we can meet halfway on on a number.
Um I'm looking forward to to uh actually recapitalizing or refunding the money to the LPR network, and I know that that was something that was actually reworked into the budget, and I think that's a something that we needed to correct. Um I'd I'd be open to entertaining that seventy thousand, right? So the seventy thousand that's pro- pro- um projected right now in potential revenue sources coming back into the budget, maybe that's an opportunity that we would have to maybe reduce uh the sinking fund. But um I'm still not reaching that one forty-four uh threshold that you guys uh are are suggesting at this time. And to be quite honest with you, anything short of that has already proven us over time how we have had to dip into reserves. I mean, we did it to the Optimist Park last year, we're doing it this time with the senior center, and we continue to do this because I know that it sounds good, at the same time, we're getting more money, but our expenses have increased significantly. And um I I don't think it'll be responsible for us to continue to go back without us identifying that money on the front end, so that's why I'm being a little bit more hesitant than usual um on that one pi- one point five reduction.
Has anyone else identified any any other line items or buckets that they feel can be reduced to get us to this goal?
To the chair, um well, I know I asked the the manager to take a look at existing open positions to see the total of salaries that we can save if we don't fill them right now this year. Uh were you able to take a look at that?
Yeah, I didn't calculate the dollar amount, but I could tell you that there we 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 saw four. One is the um deputy town clerk, which is also serves as the council's uh assistant. Uh the second was the-
And what's the total salary there?
It's a range, it you know, I can't tell you a specific-
I mean, a- a- average, if anything, not that we're not gonna fill the position, but I just like to give a-
Forty-something to sixty?
I didn't hear what the question was.
I just wanna know what positions are still open and the salary, the average salary, just to give give us an idea.
You can prob- a rough number?
Yeah, yeah.
Probably about fifty.
For fifty, for that position, and the other positions?
The part-time receptionist, which is the relief for uh Sandra and also uh handles most of the phone calls all morning so that Sandra can do the uh inspection phone calls. Uh that position, I think it's about nineteen dollars an hour, twenty dollars an hour for twenty hours, so.
So like four?
Is that, yeah, that's not, the the other one is the uh Arbor Coordinator. The Arbor Coordinator, Jeremy? Forty-five? The uh-
Is that including um, is that including insurance?
Insurance, right, that's just salary, so you'd have to then, you know, any insurance and taxes and federal income tax-
Would that be like ten percent, fifteen percent?
Uh Florida retirement system and anything.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and then there was uh one more. Oh, the transportation planner, that since Renee left and we moved Olivia to uh from transportation to grants, that uh we're and we're in the process of of interviewing for, I believe, all of these.
Sure, and so what's the transportation uh salary?
I think-
Average?
Probably, I think around sixty.
Sixty.
The transportation manager does not affect the general fund.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, that's PTP, you're right.
That's okay, so we're looking at uh about a hundred and well, if you add the insurance and all that stuff, no, I I or we're looking about sixty if you if you don't include the 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 assistant town clerk, you're looking about seventy or eighty when you include salary plus insurance and all that stuff. Would that, would you say that?
Yeah, a- and I know you asked me to calculate that, but I have to put on the record, Councilmember, that I completely uh recommend against not filling those positions. Those are vital positions-
Sure.
That they they do uh important work, and a lot of them are do important work that are direct impact to resident and customer service.
Sure.
Service delivery.
Wanted to s- and again, the reason for the question is, you know, no stone unturned, right? Trying to trying to-
I understand.
Find out where we're where we're at, um eh you know, if if um and I'll tell you my my thinking on this as well is, everybody's had to tighten their belts uh over the last four years. Um and um you know, I think the residents, although they 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 want services, absolutely, a hundred percent, we we need to give it to them. I think they expect us as a as an organization to do our best to tighten our belts and go through that uh exercise, and you know, through a fine-tooth comb kind of thing. And uh you know, one point five, even a one percent, to show that we are going to do our due diligence to find that, and opening up those, you know, turning up those stones might find something that we weren't, we didn't think about before and say, wait, there's an opportunity here as well. You know, five hundred dollars here, a thousand dollars there, it adds up, right? So um and that's and that's the reason I asked you to uh uh Mr. Manager, that that's the only reason why, I just wanna make sure we're we're there. I I I would ask Melissa, a one percent, um instead of one point five, one percent uh millage reduction, would that be around um about seventy thousand then, seventy-five thousand? Less revenue?
Closer to a hundred.
Closer to a hundred? Okay.
Ninety-six thousand two hundred.
Ninety-six thousand two hundred, and that would, the millage would be about two point um-
Reducing it by one percent, it would be a two point zero five two five.
Zero five two, okay. So just to my colleagues, uh you know, one percent drop on that, I I was asking the manager for about a couple positions that we might hold off on filling. His position is he, you know, he feels they're they're vital, of course. Um but there's still, I I believe there's an opportunity also, the sinking fund is super important, and I totally understand, but there might be an opportunity to not fund it as much, maybe a one percent. I think the residents are looking at us saying, hey, guys, we have to tighten our belts at our homes. I think they expect us to at least make an effort, right? So um you know, have we voted on the on the on the one point five percent yet? Okay, well, then I'll 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 hold off on any anything. All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I I have some some additional remarks. Uh and this is to the Vice Mayor, and Vice Mayor appreciate the kind of thought process and and your insight. And I appreciate the the COLA and the CPI lining up. Is this something moving forward that you would like to do?
Yeah, yeah, I I think that moving forward is good policy.
I I think so as well, but in talking about tightening our belt last year, and I know it's only one charter offer, one one individual reference CPI, the CPI was seven point eight percent. And tying ourselves or mandating us to a CPI of seven point eight, which is actually more than double what we're considering now, I I think is 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 gonna put us in a worse position, right? If that CPI CPI grows. So you know, again, you know, if this is something that we're in the long term, I'd like to see exactly what maybe that trend has been over time. And maybe last year was one of those anomalies where seven point eight percent is is really a big number. But I don't think any of us here would have voted for a seven point eight adjustment across the board, right?
Yeah, ab- absolutely not, and I mean, obviously-
So I can see the methodology that got you to this point, cause this year the number kind of works out. But I think long term, um you know, if we're looking at this as a strategy, we probably have to rethink that.
Point approach, I mean, I understand the comparison, the need to really think about a little bit about the next step that you're gonna take, but it's really important that we go to the millage and kind of stay on point.
Got it, thank you. Yeah, I'll I'll end the discussion, we'll we'll move forward later.
Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
So the amendment and the motion, the table is motion to reduce the millage rate to two point zero four two one, which is a reduction of one point five percent. Councilmember Ruano.
No.
Councilmember Diego.
No.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Goyazo.
No.
Councilmember Moreira.
No.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Sid.
Yes.
The motion fails.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we're on to the main motion, seeing no further comments, um Madam? Yes, Councilmember.
I'd love to make a motion uh to adopt a one percent drop in the millage rate.
Second.
All right, discussion, 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 discussion.
Yeah, and that would, um you said it was uh ninety-six, ninety, ninety-six or ninety-eight? Ninety-six two?
Two point zero five two, I believe.
If we reduce the millage by one percent, the millage rate would be two point zero five two five, and it would generate ninety-six thousand two hundred less in ad valorem.
Okay, so I would take a look at the twenty thousand dollar position. Um maybe just be a little more open, I know there's a range in salary, but uh you know, not I know you wanna find someone that's experienced and of course, but um maybe somebody internally who has the has the, you know, the where or fall to do the decision, but not the total experience, and maybe the salary doesn't have to, the offer doesn't have to be as as high. Uh and then the sinking fund, perhaps, if if our colleagues are amenable, not to dip too much into it, but to use that as the other, you know, to to get to that, to that ninety-six two, yes.
And I apologize for interrupting you.
Details, yeah.
But you're you're really going kind of into the, into the budget.
All right, so I'll I'll keep it at one percent, guys.
I apologize.
Yeah, I'll stay there, sorry. So the the only reason I'm and I'm gonna vote for the one percent, and it might not sound like it's a big deal for for that next generation buying a home in the town post-COVID. A lot of us bought it pre-COVID, we're locked in, people are are losing their opportunity to move to the town and different communities, because when they're at the closing table, the real taxes get disclosed. And people, there is a new rule now, and Chato knows, a couple years back, where they're actually forcing uh at the closing table to disclose what the real taxes are gonna be once that homestead disappears, and people are losing their opportu- so I think anytime that we have an opportunity to do that, especially now that interest rates went down, demand's gonna go up, valuations are going back up, I think it's it's really, really important, A, for our seniors, they'll see a one percent decrease in there, but that next generation of Miami Lakers, because valuations aren't going anywhere anytime soon. We're becoming the most expensive community in the community in in the United States, South Florida is, and interest rates are going down, Chato's a real estate professional, Magali knows, she's been in the industry forever. Eh it it's it's becoming harder and harder and harder at the closing table, especially for that next generation of Miami Lakers, and any percent, not only from us, from any other governmental agency, is really welcome because it's starting to impact the opportunity factor for that next generation who's leaving Miami Lakes, to be quite honest with you, and it's lea- and leaving South Florida in general. So that's why I'm gonna be voting for uh the one percent.
Mayor, thank you, and um again, you know, historically, we've had these opportunities, and we've taken um the opportunities to roll back this budget, and I think we've we've all voted um in in that regard. Um but at the same time, it's come at a price, it's come at a price of taking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars away from our seniors, right? For the senior center, it's come at unfunding half a million dollars from the Optimist Park. It's coming at a price now that we've had to reduce our piggy bank. And absent of seeing a concrete way to bring these dollars back into this community, um you know, I feel that further reducing these these numbers are gonna continue to put us in a position where we're reducing services in the long run, in the long run. So you know, right now, I haven't heard any compelling argument from any of the three makers of the motion to to sway me. Um and trust me, I'm I'm one of those people that loves taking the the opportunity, right, to reduce it, but I haven't heard anything compelling enough, or at least backed up by our staff's um numbers that are gonna get us down to that point. What I would love to see, what I would love to see, and that's really the future Council, with Councilman Diego's, you know, uh anybody who who comes up here, i- is really take these talking points, right? Implement them and show us on that surplus and maybe give some of this money back, right? Refund the Optimist Park money, refund the senior center money, you know, start fully funding the the, but stop pulling these monies out of, you know, these these um these funds that we have, or the 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 reserves that we have, um or the the services that we have to our residents. Most of our residents that I've talked to, whether it be in the gym, whether it be in the school drop-off, they're not sweating ten dollars. They rather see that going back into their community, in the way of the trees being trimmed, the sidewalks being repaired, making sure somebody's here at town hall to answer the phone, they're not sweating ten or twenty dollars in their bill. So I, again, haven't heard the argument to 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 compel me to 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 move the the budget any lower than it already is. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, quick question, is it possible to pass the millage, pass the budget, and if need be, come back to the millage?
No.
At the same meeting?
No, the millage must be passed first, first, based on-
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I get it, but what I'm saying, then we could open up the budget again and come back, it's all, listen, I I was in aid in the legislature-
The only thing, the only thing you you can do, there there is one thing you can do. You can, you have to take the millage first, and you have to pass it, but you can table it, go to the budget, and then pick up the millage after.
But you can't vote on the budget.
I'd I'd be okay.
Conversation.
I'd be okay with that.
Then you gotta go back to the millage, pick it up, pass the millage, and then pass the budget. One has to be passed before the other.
I would be okay with that. I don't know how everybody else feels on that, we just, I know we're on a motion now, but nobody's-
I think we're kinda doing that anyway.
No, 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 you you gotta do it that way, the way I just said. If that's what you wanna do, that's fine, but you first have to then just table this item, go to the budget, discuss the budget, then- Yes. No, no, you you can't.
You guys aren't listening, you're not listening what he's just said.
No, 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 you you have to table this item, take the budget, you can discuss it, then you have to table the budget-
And come back to the budget.
The millage, pass the millage first, then pass the budget.
Yeah.
Procedurally, you can do that, other municipalities do.
All right, we're back on to the one percent.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Councilman Diego.
Thank you, and again, as I I typically, I I am always sympathetic to any effort to reduce the millage rate. I voted for the two percent uh two percent reduction a while back, ultimately voted for the rollback rate. Um historically, joined Councilman Goyazo in reducing uh this the uh the NSD budgets uh in order to reduce assessments there, the list goes on. Eh but if there's one thing I learned, especially from the two percent reduction, is that ultimately, nobody felt any of that. Um and so a one percent reduction especially is doing nothing more than virtue signaling. And I I don't believe in doing that, I think it's either we provide meaningful tax relief or we give the residents the services they deserve, so I just cannot be uh in support of the one percent reduction.
Thank you. Any further discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
So the motion is to reduce the millage rate to set it to two point zero five two five, which is a reduction of one percentage. Councilmember Moreira.
No.
Councilmember Diego. Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Goyazo.
No.
Councilmember Ruano.
No.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Sid.
Yes.
Yes.
The motion fails.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I make a motion to table the millage discussion, and we take up the budget, and table the, the budget after that.
I'll second.
So the motion at this time has to be just to?
To table.
It's not debated. It's just procedurally under Rob's rules, you just have to vote on it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Garcia.
Wait, Madam Clerk, uh, what are we voting on?
Motion to table the discussion of the millage rate.
The attorney said we cannot debate or ask questions, so it's a tabling motion.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, please call.
Yes. Motion to table the discussion of the millage rate. Mo- uh, Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Di- uh, Diego.
No.
Councilmember Goyasso.
No.
Councilmember Ruano.
No.
Councilmember Moreira.
No.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Sid.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing no further motions, unless there is, we're gonna take a motion on the, the main, on a, a vote on the main motion.
Item six A, ordinance in second reading, motion to approve the ordinance and the millage rate to be set at two point zero seven three two mils. Councilmember Moreira.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruano.
Yes.
Councilmember Diego.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
No.
Councilmember Goyasso.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
No.
Mayor Sid.
No.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to the next item, item six B. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on item six B, which is approving and adopting the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. Anyone from the public wishing to speak?
Maybe the ordinance first.
Anyone from the what, public wishing to speak? Well, it's a public hearing, then he reads.
Esther Colan, sixty-eight fifty-five, Casia Place. I really don't have much to say, except, do you see what you have been doing here? We, but you should, we should have been doing this a month ago, and maybe we would have needed another budget workshop, and you could have sat with the town manager and identified all these problems. We wouldn't be doing this. This reminds me of the council we had before Brian sat here. It was four to three. Now it's four to three, the opposite. So at the end of the day, you're really not being effective, and you're not representing the people. You're just playing a game. And it's very offensive that I personally take my, I always, I also re- view all your meetings and committee meetings. This has to stop. Let's bring, bring some normalcy back to our town, and start looking out for each other, not for individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Nobody's online. Nobody's else in person. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, an ordinance of the town of Miami Lakes, Florida, approving and adopting the budget for the town of Miami Lakes for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Providing for expenditure funds, providing for amendments, providing for carryover of funds, providing for the incorporation of the adopted capital budget as a capital improvement element of the comprehensive plan, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Are there any motions on the table to get discussion going?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All right. Discussion on the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
If I, if I, the, the, this is the same exact budget as you saw at the first budget hearing. The one and only change was the, uh, item that was adopted at the last budget hearing, which was to fund the LPRs out of the general fund and not out of the neighborhood service districts. So the thirty-two thousand, five hundred to do that. What we did in the last four to six weeks, we've had, uh, several staff changes of, uh, people that have left, and then we've made internal changes. The salary savings, the people that have gone into those positions, uh, collectively, uh, have given us the capacity to fund the thirty-two five from salaries. So it's a transfer of, from thirty-two five, because they are making, uh, slightly less than the, the folks that were there before. So adding those together, we were able to find the thirty-two five hundred without having to make any further cuts in tree trimming, or mowing, or anything else.
Got it. Question, uh, for you as we get into, to discussion. Uh, does this budget include a rebate for our low-income seniors?
No.
Does this budget include a rebate for our, our disabled community, our, our disabled veterans?
No rebates whatsoever, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, any further discussion, any motions, council?
I just had a question. I know that there was a public comment that came up earlier, um, regarding the committee budgets, and I just wanted to understand, um, from what the individual was, was referring to. Um, what was the ask? I, I know what we're, we're, we're funding at the same level, but what was the ask, uh, cumulative ask of all of the committees?
So the direction that the committees were given is that they essentially had the same total budget as the prior year, that they could allocate within whatever line items they had. So if they had thirty thousand, they could allocate the thirty thousand within their budget, however they self-fit. So if one event seemed to be more, um, did better than others, they would allocate more to that. Um, as far as what they asked for, I would need some time to look and tell you what they asked for in addition to what they already had.
And Councilmember, if I can interject, if you remember last year's budget, when the millage weight, millage rate was rolled back, um, in order to balance that budget, and it's been mentioned here already a couple of times, we had to take half a million dollars from the Miami Lakes Optimus Park just to balance last year's budget. So we knew we were starting half a million dollars in the hole when we started this whole budget compilation, uh, process. In addition, we've had the, uh, extra allocation that, uh, had to be done for the settlement of the, uh, legal case, that, the PISI case. So if you total that, we, uh, we went through the exercise, the committees, and Melissa's gonna get that for you, they had their, their request, but we knew that we were gonna be already pressed this entire budget. We did not foresee that the council was gonna consider a millage increase to, uh, make up for some of these, uh, changes that we've had over the last few years. So we kind of told them, more than likely, you're gonna stay with your existing budget from last year flat. And, uh, but they did go through the exercise and had, uh, budget requests, and Melissa will get that for you. But I wanted to kind of put that in, in context, as, you know, this is not just a snapshot in time, it's a compilation of, of the several actions that have taken place over several years.
Yeah, no, and, and I get that, and I, you know, I think that's kind of the, the tightening of the belt, so to speak, that we've been doing over year and, year and, year and, um, but I also hea- heard what, what Marit said, you know? Um, it's come at a price, right? They have the exact same funding, but I'm pretty sure that all of their events cost a lot more to produce, right? Especially at a time that maybe individuals aren't giving them as much. So the, the yield, or the end up, the end product that the residency, right, is less programming, potentially, right?
And, and that, that has taken place throughout the entire budget and all of our operations, right? So, uh, if you remember from the workshop, when we first started having this, uh, conversation, we laid out for you that with leaving the millage rate flat, we start off already recommending to you series of, uh, cuts in parks and public works, in different real, you know, bread and butter, uh, operations, that we had to cut back on mowing, on mulching, on, uh, a lot of different, uh, things, just as a starting point with, with having a flat millage rate. Uh, so already, the, the committees were far from the only ones that had to, uh, suffer that, uh, that, that, that cost. Uh, all of our operations are being taxed with this, uh, revenue stream that we have.
Thank you.
I have a brief question. Why is it that the senior exemption, why is it that I see it was funded at, or, or last year's adopted budget was zero, and then, uh, I see seventy-seven thousand in the, uh, carry-forward amendment? Why are we funding it in the, in the amendments and not the main budget? Maybe it's just a lack of institutional knowledge on my part, but.
Yeah, it's, it's just something that's happened traditionally, when it was first, when, when I first proposed it, it was at the time of a carry-forward, and it's traditionally been something that has been funded with the, the carry-forward, rather than during the, uh, making it an evergreen during the.
Yeah, no.
The general budget.
It was just a concern to me, uh, and I think the, the mayor slightly brought it up a moment ago, that, uh, I didn't like seeing a zero there. Um, you know, I think that is important to our seniors. Um, you know, personally, I'm committing that that's gonna come back in the carry-forward as, as it has in the past.
And that's, that's been the same kind of MO, and the vice mayor's correct. He, when he brought it up, it was at a carry-forward. And then when we went the following year, we were in a similar position as we are now, and we were unable to fund it. So then again, they said, okay, we'll consider it the carry-forward, and then it hap- I think this, uh, it's happened like two or three fiscal years now, and every year, we've had the same conversation at this point in time. But then it's been a consideration at the carry-forward, and sometimes it's able to be funded, sometimes it has not.
Yeah, that, that's the institutional knowledge, that, that I didn't have from being new, but, um, so thank you for answering that. The, the other main thing for me is, uh, just in, in general about this, this budget, is, you know, I, I do strongly object, not just to the fact that two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, is, is being taken from the, the senior center interior build-out fund, uh, but not only is that a, as Ms. Wick's put it, a slap in the face to the elderly community, um, it is frankly, bad budgetary practice. You shouldn't be funding, uh, ongoing operating expenses with capital, uh, capital funds. Um, that's basic budgeting, one-on-one. Um, I, I, I don't claim to be an expert in budgeting. I'm not like, um, Ms. Colan, I'm not like Melissa, uh, but even I know that. Um, it seems like the town is getting too comfortable with the idea of borrowing from capital funds to artificially keep our, our, our millage, thank you, uh, low. And, and that's just not something that should be continued. At this point, you know, I, I understand where we're at, but I'm not happy with it, and, and I will be, you know, proposing some, some items at, at a future date uh, to address the injustice that I think is going to be done tonight to our elderly community.
Councilman, if, if I, uh, if I may, and I had promised that I was, I was going to, to speak to this point before, um, a, a few things. So, eh, wh- while I, I do wholeheartedly agree that moving money from capital funds to, uh, to, to funding ongoing operations is, is definitely not the right thing to do in the, um, in, in the long run. I think the, 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 the genesis of, of, of the item was to move that money to the sinking fund, right? Which is essentially, it's not a capital item, uh, but it's an item in, in, um, in support of, of other capital expenses, right? So it's quasi-capital, if you, if you will. Um, so it, for me, that part of it was, was not as offensive. I think taking it from the seniors is the, uh, the, the offensive part. Now, um, in the conversation, in the, in the meeting that I had, um, eh, with the, the manager and Melissa this morning, one of, one of the potential ways of making that whole is, so i- if we're, um, you know, still, uh, still talking about, and I, I, I definitely, uh, hope that the vision remains to have a senior center on, uh, the, the grand property that's set to be developed, um, on Lakeside, eh, because that facility would be a new town park, in addition to being a senior center. It's, it's both. It's a park with a senior center on it, then we would be able to use park impact fees to make the senior center build out whole. And I believe the manager, um, eh, conferred with the county, and, and that is an acceptable use of, of that pot.
Yeah. Just, I'll give you the, uh, park impact fees one-on-one, and I'll try and make it quick, just, especially for the benefit of, uh, Councilmember Moreira, who's new to this conversation. Um, park impact fees, there's two pots. One for improvements, which really is money that should go for improving a facility that you already have. The other pot, it goes to open space, which means to acquire or develop new spaces. The open space money, we believe we took a review of the, well, first of all, we do not have our own impact fee standalone ordinance. We are working, together with, uh, Lorenzo, we're working on developing our own, uh, uh, impact fee ordinance, because we believe there's a lot of benefits and flexibility that it'll afford the decision-makers to have our own ordinance. Um, so becau- the, um, the money that is, uh, that is now in, uh, improvement money is very limited, and that's the money that's gone for improvements to MLOP, improvements to Royal Oaks, et cetera, because that is really what our greatest need is, so we have used most of that. There's not a lot of capacity there. Money for acquisition of new, um, uh, open space, there is more, uh, on that, uh, fund. We have one point five million dollars available for that. It has been informally kind of targeted or earmarked for Par Three, for Bridge Park, and for other things, because there's not a lot of open space really to acquire and to do. So we believe, after reading the ordinance, that the op- since this is gonna be a property we do not have, but we are going to acquire a new property, it's just that it's gonna be, uh, acquired, it's gonna have, uh, partial development at that point, it's gonna have a building, and this money would go towards finishing the building, we believe that, uh, that it is an applicable use. We have, uh, asked the county for their interpretation to make sure that is okay. So if this council, uh, makes a motion and it passes to make a transfer of park or open space monies from that fund into the senior center, um, capital fund to replace the two fifty that is being, uh, considered to be moved, then I would just make sure that you couch it with, subject to the approval of the Miami Dade County.
And to avoid repeating that, that is my motion, Madam Clerk.
I'll second that.
Yes. Discussion on this motion, discussion on this motion, uh, anybody?
No discussion here, but that's in, exactly aligned with the, the type of principles and the type of creativity that I think we need to start moving towards. Rather than nipping and tucking at things that could cost us services, I completely agree with this one, you know? If we can take it out of open, open spaces, we can refund the senior center, I would even say you might even have to double it, right? I would almost say that entire allocation, right, should be something that you should consider, just because I don't think half a million dollars is gonna be that, that build-out. But that's gonna be for future councils to decide. So I'm begging, right, that you get an, an answer to that question from the county, and that it's favorable. God willing, that that answer's favorable. I think that's a win-win for everybody, so I wholeheartedly support that motion. Thank you.
Any further, any further comments? Seeing none.
One, one second. Just, uh, to, to final, put a bow on the, on the issue. A hundred percent that, I, I piggyback on, on Councilman Goyasso's comments on this. It doesn't take away the argument about, um, using, uh, contingency accounts or, or capital accounts. However, uh, if I'm gonna take from one or the other, eh, and I gotta choose, uh, between two evils, this is definitely a, a lesser evil than taking from our seniors. I, I think the frustration of our senior community was palpable, uh, today, and, and I, I really appreciate being able to, to calm them, uh, a- and show them, rather than tell them that, that we care.
Right. So in a nutshell, and I know I said a lot of things, but in a nutshell, if you approve this move, the senior center will still be whole and funded at five hundred thousand dollars. It'll just be from a different source.
All right, any further comments? Uh, Councilman Ruano, then Councilman, uh, Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. So what are the probabilities of this being approved? Because I, I mean, I feel comfortable doing it, but I don't like to leave it up in the air, subject to, contingent to, like, that doesn't seem concrete to me, so.
I mean, I can't give you a lot of gambling, man, but I can't tell you if it's fifty-fifty or ninety-five-five. I mean, if we took a significant lead at it today, and we looked at it, and we believe that this is a property today, we don't know that far, right? So it would be the acquisition, and that, that's for sure, one hundred percent. That's an acceptable use to acquire new space, whether it be an ability for, uh, a park, or it be open, uh, dream space, it be, it could be a developer contribution of the property. There's, there's a lot of different ways that can define and be an appropriate contribution. So this is the, the appropriate use for this property. It's just a building, because it's gonna be one that's gonna be partially constructed, and what this, what this function could, uh, use for is for completing, and that, uh, but it is a new acquisition.
So even. Okay. So even if the, even if, even if we're not purchasing this property, even if it is being given to the council, it is still considered a new acquisition?
Yes.
And the funds are, that we have the ability to use the funds for build-out? And the funds are, that we have the ability to use the funds for build out purposes, not just to pay and acquire land?
Yeah, because it's for the acquisition or uh improvement of a new piece of property. And this is a new piece of property, today as we speak, we do not own that property, it's not ours. It would be a new acquisition eh and it's like you, if you buy a a piece of property uh from some somebody and you you build a park, a community center on it. All of that is o- is applicable and it's usable with open space.
Not just the land, the building as well?
Correct, cause it's not, cause you don't have it today, it's it's new. But if you have like an MLOP or Roy- Royal Oaks, that it's an existing building and you wanna make improvements to that, that open space money cannot be used for that.
No, understood, the way that you're describing it now, I feel a little more comfortable. I thought that those funds for only, were only to acquire land, but they are also for building and improving, okay, thank you.
Ms. Mr. Manager, um I I too feel comfortable that we're right on this, but what if we're not? Are is the senior center now two hundred and fifty in the hole?
Re- remember what you're doing, right? You you have, we have discussed here different pots, right, different savings accounts. We have the pot for the sinking fund, we have the pot for unfunded uh unallocated fund balance, we have the pot for different capital accounts. We have all these different pots. And really what you're doing is allocating because you're setting a priority, right, that with this vote tonight. Is you're setting a priority that the senior center is important to this town, to this council. So what you're doing is moving money from one pot into that pot, into the senior center pot to prioritize it by your vote, by funding it to a certain level. So if if this turns out at the end of the day, after discussion, after arbitra- trading with the county or having discussions and beating it up, that it cannot be done. Then the money is still there, it's just not in that pot. And then we we can work on uh finding the money to put into that pot. But I believe that that we have a very good case that this is an appropriate use for tho- those funds.
Councilmember, and if if maybe this this will put you at ease. So the different buckets of of money that we're really talking about are not um buckets of money that are actively being used for ongoing operations, right? So um I I'm fairly confident that the county will will agree with our position. In the event that it 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 doesn't, then this council will have the opportunity to identify other funding sources to make uh the senior center whole. Some of which could be either going back into the into the sinking fund, some of which could be unforeseen um eh carry forward funds. Eh the, you know, eh there might be other line items in here that a future council decides that it wants to uh to cut to to be able to make that happen. I think we're we're clearly making a statement that we're committed to making this whole and, you know, if if not through this funding source, then a future council will have the opportunity to uh to find a different one.
When will we, when do we anticipate hearing back from the county?
It's the county.
I I I underst- well, yeah, that's that that's more of my fear, but.
But this is now, this is now on the top of at least my list, right? So I I I leave, my to-do list is my inbox in my emails and it's there. So ask the staff, I I I have good, I have a decent system of bird dogging those pending items. And I get back to them, hey, give me an update, what's the status? And this is one of those things that if I don't hear back in a week to ten days, I'm gonna follow up with that person and say, hey, what's up? And if I don't get the right answer, then I have avenues, right? We have elected officials that represent uh this part of town that is uh a subsequent avenue, right? We try all the nice ways, but ultimately at the end of the day, if we need to uh get our representatives in the county that can uh consider our request. Because we're not getting the right answer from staff or or lower in the food chain, then we will exercise those options, not as a first choice, but we have those uh in our tool belt, tool belt.
One uh, one last question. In, under the special revenue funds, under the transportation gas tax, you do have a line item for uh roads, traffic calming. I'm assuming that's speed bumps, right? Um, I I noted that twenty-two, twenty-three actuals were fifty.
Real quick, Brian, can we finish this motion? Cause it's specific on on one item that that uh that the vice mayor had, then we'll jump to you.
Yeah.
Cause I think you had a a comment on the motion. Let's get that and then we'll take a quick vote and then we'll get back to Councilman.
No, I just wanted to to say uh thank you to the vice mayor, it's very, and and to the staff um for coming up with something innovative and and thinking out of the box on this. Um, and that's what I was referring to when we're put in that situation, we're up against the wall, we're looking at different areas that we can find out of the box thinking. So thank you to 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 the vice mayor and the staff for doing that, that's that's an amazing um idea that they have that um. And and they followed through, did the homework and it's something that actually, look, we're we're doing what we were put here to do. And that is fully fun, you know, the 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 build out, right? So um I just wanna thank the vice mayor and the staff for that.
All right, on this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, seen none, the motion passes. We're back onto the main motion as amended, Councilman Morrera.
So, as I was about to say, under um, under the special revenue funds, under the transportation um section. Yeah, I literally lost it while we were talking, uh there it is, page one seventeen. Or uh if you're looking in the middle, it's one seventeen, if you're looking at the bottom right, it's uh fifty-seven of one oh six. Um, I'm noting that twenty-two, twenty-three actuals were fifty dollars. Um, the adopted twenty-three, twenty-four was one thirty-five, a hundred and thir- sorry, a hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-one. But then our year-end projection for twenty-three, twenty-four is twenty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars. So we significantly underspent here. Why are we telling our residents that we're having issues in putting up these speed bumps if we're not even using up all the funds in our eh 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 in our budget?
Good evening, good evening, council. So that that budget was uh passed the last, the last budget cycle in anticipation for the the new criteria passing earlier in that fiscal year. That did not happen, we got it um recently, I think it was in January, January, February. And that's when we went ahead and proceeded with the reevaluation of the the location that was just discussed this the this evening, which was Palmetto Palm. We've also done uh a few, another street and in addition to that, we've, with the recommendation from this council, we've purchased an additional unit to accelerate the studies. With this new criteria, now that we have it in place, the approval of the of the locations once their study, the the probability is higher. So we anticipate that we're gonna be accelerating the installations of these. In addition to that, we have other locations that the old style has failed and we're proceeding to install the new uh asphalt, which is more expensive. But in the end, it has a longer lifespan. So we do anticipate that we'll be using a a significant amount of this throughout the the next fiscal year.
Approximately how many roads or how many speed bump projects do we have currently on that waitlist? I remember seeing the list, I just can't remember how many were on it.
I wanna say it's over twenty.
That many? Is a hundred and seven thousand three hundred and sixty enough to cover that?
Yeah, well, I I would have to run the number before I give you that that answer.
That's fine.
Cause we we make it a, an estimation of what's gonna be the approval rating. Uh so I I don't wanna say that every single location is gonna get approved, so.
And the ability to, yeah, true. And the ability to speed this process up is dependent on the purchase of that device that you mentioned, right?
We already have it and it's actually.
We already purchased it.
We just finished doing the the troubleshooting and testing that we typically do and we're about to deploy it next week.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Real quick on that, uh Director Santos, the the con- and it's germane to the discussion, we're gonna prove the the budget. The comments that that uh that Esther made, was there a street moved up on the list or do we follow the list very strictly?
We follow, so that street had already been studied and with the past criteria, it had failed. When the new criteria passed, all we did was reevaluate it with the the new criteria. So that didn't require us to go out there and do a new study or bump anybody down the line.
It was data we already had.
Yeah, the machine was running on some other location while we were just evaluating old data.
How many other streets were you able to do that on?
Uh, for this?
Yep, that reevaluate data, cause I know we have data from a hundred, a hundred and fifty-second, I mean, there's a bunch of a hundred and fifty-third.
That's the only one, that's the only one we've done at the moment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Would it, would it be too much to ask or is it, do you need more money to reevaluate in the budget, to reevaluate the other streets that that haven't been evaluated? Or is it, does a manager need to give you that direction?
What, one of the reasons we did that one is because the data was very new, it was recent, the other ones is much older, so.
Yeah, when it gets too old, it gets stale, right?
We, yeah, we we can go and check if we have recent ones that that are closer to that timeline, uh similar to Palmetto Palm. But if it's too old, traffic patterns may have changed and and we would prefer to re-study.
Understand, just like bread, it gets stale if you leave it out too long, so the studies. All right, any other discussions or motions on the budget? Any other discussions, motions on the budget? Anybody else, seen none? Yes, Councilman Garcia.
Just, just an item that I wanna bring up again, um uh about adding an additional officer. Um, and that's the main reason why, uh Mr. Manager, I I ask you to come up with the numbers when it comes to, you know, positions that we do not need. Or, not that we don't need, but they're open, okay? Um, I I'm I'm still under the um, I I still believe since the growth of the town, um, you know, and I know we are pretty much built out, right? However, there there are new apartments coming out online and um I just want, I just believe we need an additional officer. And uh just to be sure, the additional officer will be a hundred and sixty thousand, is that?
Yeah, it was a one sixty, right, uh Melissa, one officer, one sixty, all in? Yeah.
So I I would just ask my colleagues, if we could not fill two positions, and I'm not including the 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 assistant deputy town clerk, but the other two positions. Uh, that would be about, what, about seventy, eighty thousand when you include insurance? Is that, is that what uh we talked about? The forty-five, the twenty for the part-time position and?
It would probably be more than seventy, probably.
About eighty?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the two of them together.
Okay.
With all, you know, with the uh federal withholding, the social security tax, all the pension, the health insurance, all with all the uh the package.
Yeah, so I.
All in.
How much?
That will be eighty.
What was the number, I'm sorry?
About eighty, which is.
For those two positions.
And what, and what are the two positions?
Which position were you referring to?
Cause he excluded um.
Not, not the deputy town clerk.
And and not the the transportation because that's funded from PTP.
Yeah, the other, the other.
So it'd be the part-time?
Part-time receptionist.
Who, what else?
Which I don't recommend. The arborist, right, which is the one that is on a day-to-day basis handling uh phone calls and going out and doing assessments on trees and. And that I think is something that is, we get calls every single day of the of the week uh from folks who wanna have their trees trimmed or assessed or.
Mr. Manager, who who's taking those calls now, who's dealing with those?
They're splitting it amongst the other uh staff members. The person who was doing that before was moved into another spot, it was promoted from within. And he's handling uh some of that in addition to his new role and trying to learn a new role. Uh, so everybody's doing a little bit more right now just to cover. But I can tell you that it's not being done at the same level as it was when there was a dedicated person with the ability to go out there. Uh Jeremy sometimes has to be, Jeremy or JP have to be the ones to go out there and do an inspection of of a tree or what have you. And and yeah, it's doable, but it's not, it's not the way of delivering the 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 best level of service.
If if I may, just to add to this particular discussion, I receive many phone calls regarding this issue where people have put in to have a tree looked at. Or and I think that aside from maybe sidewalks, trees are the next thing that's on the top of the list of priorities. And the residents are not happy with the speed at which we are responding to these calls.
No, understood, and what I'm doing right now is just trying to figure out, see if there's any areas that we could take from to.
Councilmember, if I can interject something, and and I know that's been a focus of of yours, I know it's been a focus of of the mayor and I know his. Public safety is a focus of this entire, this entire council and and it's a focus of mine. I live here too, my my family lives here too and I want this to be as as safe a place as 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 possible. Um, and not just to claim that it is, but to really be as safe as possible, right? So eh what I could tell you is I have been working with uh Major Gonzalez and his staff on developing a staffing model. That may enhance, uh well, not may, will enhance staffing, will enhance uh some of the distribution of days off for the police officers. So it it could end up eh with the addition of two officers, this this staffing model could work with the eh with the addition of two officers. And it could pay many def- uh benefits to the level of police protection in the town as well as uh for the officers and so forth. So what I can commit to you and I promise to you that um so long as that, we don't get into rolling back the the millage rate in in subsequent years. That I will bring that model to you in next year's uh budget so that you can consider um and and look at with the uh with the proviso that we don't, you know. Take from one side and 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 adding on the other side, so.
Just to clarify, um, what I'm hearing is that you already working on a plan that's gonna add two officers without um. So what I, so I would have, where would that money come from?
Well, that's why I say, that's why I couched it saying.
Yeah.
We cannot uh take on one side, which is reduction of the millage rate and adding on the other side, cause those things are incompatible with each other. So 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 long as we consider that and and, you know, you you go to the store, you wanna buy a shirt, you have to pay for the shirt. You can't just go to the store and say, I'd like that shirt, but I don't wanna pay for that shirt. So things that we acquire, that we get, we're, we have to, you know, eh pay for them.
So assuming that the military stays flat next year, you're saying that you would be able to add two additional officers?
I I, it's really too early to tell you that, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that because there's so many other revenue sources. But I will bring you the staffing model for your consideration when we start early on in the conversation, for your consideration, when we start talking about it in workshop.
I I guess the question I have is, eh, you know, eh, you know, the the expenses are going to, when inflation continue to go up. And we're gonna have the same issues we have now. So it's like, you know, we we're able, or you you think you're able to find two next year and but we can't find one this year. And that's, that's, I guess the question I have is it doesn't jive to me in that sense.
Because we've already taken a step, right? Back in July, this council set the cap on the military, right? I think that this this, the subsequent council that may include, uh some of you will not include some of you, cause some several of you are term limited out. The the council is gonna have to have a conversation next year, uh eh eh at the beginning of the conversation on budgets, to have a conversation about to what level do they want to to fund things? And uh the consideration of adjustments in the military, cause it's a real, it's a reality. And that conversation is gonna have to be had and in that conversation, I want to introduce this model. Uh, which I think is gonna be beneficial to the staffing levels and it's gonna be beneficial to the officers. And um I believe, but that conversation has, it has to be had together. Because you cannot talk about just e- e- extra expenses without extra revenue.
Right, Mi- Mr. Manager, if I'm, uh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead and go ahead.
I I'm I'm a little, I'm a little confused and maybe you can, you can clarify for me. So what what I understood from your comments is, uh so long as we don't roll back the millage next year, you would be able to bring us a plan with two more officers. We didn't roll back the millage this year, we kept the millage flat.
No, but eh and I'm, and when I say roll back the millage rate, because that the the effect of last year's rollback, we're still feeling it today. You know, and and that's, I go back to my conversation early on, which was, we started this year, before we even did, made a single decision, put a single number on a, on a single piece of paper. We started half a million dollars in the hole because of the borrowing from a capital account last year of five hundred thousand dollars, right? So right away, that, and that's why I always say that the um, the adjustment of the millage rate is a one-way valve. It only opens in one direction, it only goes down, 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 because the hard part is adjusting it back, right? So when we make that adjustment, that that adjustment is a perpetual adjustment because unless this year, we would have said, okay, let's raise the millage rate back to what it was the previous year. Where that would have given more capacity to make uh, to consider uh increases in uh in extra officers or whatever uh priorities this council set. Uh, short of that, you know, we started out half a million dollars in the hole. And that, so that's why I say it's a, those those are perpetual and and multi-year decisions, it's not just a single budget year that that affects.
So I I I think I'm still hearing what what I was afraid that I was hearing, which is that plan for increasing, for bringing two additional officers is gonna come with an increase to the.
that plan for increasing, for bringing two additional officers is gonna come with an increase to the millage.
Well, it's a consideration that I'm gonna, I'm gonna, but tha- tha- that's a, that's a consideration you guys will have to make.
Right.
Um, and I'm gonna put that plan before you with all the different ways and different, uh, you know, ideas for you to consider. Uh, but I wanna have the conversation, because I know it's important to this council to, to look at staffing levels in the police department.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, wouldn't it make it easier to see if we can find a hundred and sixty thousand dollars this year, get one going, and then and then next year will be a lot easier for us, we won't have to consider raising the millage and keeping the, the millage flat?
Yeah, the, the hundred and sixty thousand dollars this year will only come really one way, which would mean additional cuts, not just cutting, just making even more cuts in some of the areas that we've already talked about. Or not funding some of the things that you've talked about, like funding the sinking fund and sunk, and, uh, and funding these other operations, these other, uh, properly, uh, you know, savings accounts. So, that's the only way. It, it's the only way, and, and operationally, um, Councilmember, adding one officer, it sounds good, but operationally, a single officer on a staff of fifty officers approximately, operationally, it doesn't really do all that much, right? So, it may just give a little bit of relief on one of the shifts, but remember, that officer now is gonna be off two days, he's gonna have vacation days, he's gonna go to court, he's gonna have sick days, so the, the, adding one officer doesn't necessarily give you as much bang for the buck as you would think, right? Because you say, okay, we got another officer. You're not gonna have an extra person on duty all the time, twenty-four, seven.
I agree one hundred percent. No, no, I under. And, I'm sorry, I.
And that's why the, the plan that the major was, that we've been discussing, may have multiple, uh, you know, effects that will, that will help, and really increase staffing levels across the board.
But one of the things that I know I brought up, and I know some of us, I think most of us brought up is, if we know we're gonna grow it, and we need to grow it, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be easier to do one at a time to get to that level? You say two, you know, I was thinking three or four, but if you say two, I'm gonna go with the experts, of course, with, with the major. Wouldn't it be easier to do it one year at a time, put less pressure on the budget each year, right? And, uh, we have more flexibility every time we, we work with the budget. So, that's why, what I'm proposing is not filling those two positions, taking from the, the sinking fund for now, um, uh, taking the rest from the, from the sinking fund, and I know that uh, seeing what the carryfor has in, in store, and then, um, there's gonna be another, there's gonna be another council up here, uh, brand-new members, and then they'll take on that, that aspect of it. But I know we've all committed, and even the new uh, uh, council members, and the ones that are running right now have committed to public safety, and I think all of them committed to extra, adding extra officers. And then we can deal with that in, in the future, but, um, I just think that it's easier if we add one now and then one next year. Uh, and if two is all we need, then two is all we need. Uh, if that's what you're, if that's what the major's telling me, then that's what the major's telling me. I just think it's a little easier and less pressure on us, uh, in the next year's budget. And I know what you're saying, your argument's a hundred percent. I just think, uh, even one officer will cause less headaches than not, is what I'm trying to say, I guess. That's, that's my thinking, I don't know my, my colleagues.
Councilman, if you can make a motion one way or the other, should we get into the proper posture?
Yeah, I, I would.
And I, and I just wanna make a point of order.
Yes.
We have multiple opportunities to dissect, slice and dice, not from the dais. We have workshops, we have private meetings that we're invited to, and every time we kind, kind of come back to this slice and dice from the dais, which is not just a bad look, right? It's terrible on staff, we're trying to get our thoughts across, and we're not organized. Yet, we, we have these opportunities. Moving forward, I'm not gonna be here, but take up the manager, take up the budgeting staff's time, slice and dice the budget, try to come up with these ideas at those times, so when we're actually talking about the budget, it's nuts and bolts, and, and I was about to call the question, so I appreciate what the mayor did, which is basically trying to bring us back into the discussion.
Yeah, we, we gotta start making motions, so we can get into any discussion. Now, we're gonna move on, and we'll get into closing statements, if anybody wants to make it.
I'll, I'll just make a quick motion, that we do not fill those two positions, and we take the rest from the sinking fund to be able to, uh, fund one additional officer.
I'll second that, uh, discussion, if not, we'll go straight into a vote. Madam Clerk, uh.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not gonna support the motion, and I, and I wanna explain why. We are funding police overtime, we are funding the traffic detail, the burglary detail, the holiday detail, um, and time and time again, our police major has expressed to us that overtime dollars are more flexible and more effective with regards to putting more bodies on the street. So, I know that bringing more officers in is something that we've, that we've discussed, but I don't want the community to think that we're not focusing on public safety, because we are. It's in the budget, it's being funded as it was funded in previous years, and these dollars are utilized in a more flexible way, and the police department has an easier funding source with which to fill those gaps where necessary, because one more body, like the manager said, is not gonna be everywhere all the time. So, I'm not gonna be supporting it, but I wanted to assure the community that there is public safety dollars, uh, being, uh, implemented in this budget.
Thank you. Well, at least I'm consistent.
So, I, I just wanna say why I'm, I'm voting on this in, in affirmative. One of the opportunities that the next mayor's gonna have is nego, renegotiating the police contract's gonna be out of the, the bureaucrat's hands, it's gonna fall in your hands. One of the things that's gonna happen is the negotiation of the fee of what we pay. Right now, it's between five to eight, depending on the year. Taking that to three will give us more than enough money to, to actually not only add one, maybe even add four. The other thing it does, although I, I think Major Gonzalez, Major Perez, uh, both Major Perez's, I know Major Ruiz, Major Perez, Amy and Jean Diappa, who I've served here with, they've had one issue, is that they don't work for the council, they don't work directly for the people, they gotta speak through whatever the manager wants them to tell them, that's the ones who hires and fires them. There's going to, even though I'm scared of certain aspects, but the accountability aspect is gonna be great, and I think there's gonna be a huge opportunity in November. So, I'm gonna vote affirmative for this, so we can start moving forward in that direction. Come November, if it's the, the Vice Mayor, Councilman Diegues, Unai Gonzalez, you're gonna be empowered to renegotiate that directly with an elected sheriff, and there's one aspect that you'll be able to do that staff can't do, is on that, is on that fee and demand that, that decreases, we're gonna have a lot more money. So, moving that ball forward, the fiscal year starts in, in a, in a week, next week. I'm wholeheartedly comfortable with, uh, with this. I've spoken to police majors throughout the, the county from different departments, and they've all told me, Manny, you cannot continuously fund certain details to make up for, for loss in manpower, in terms of having, you know, four or five officers, the mandatory minimums in different, uh, which we do in different units, but you have to augment the department as we, as you grow. You can't just put a Band-Aid on it. And again, our major, the previous majors can't say that, because they don't work for us, they work for the manager, who, the reality is, is not in favor of this. I mean, that's just the truth. And the, whoever the major is can't advocate on the other side of it, but I've spoken to enough who've told me the right thing to do is to augment it as your population grows. Again, I'm okay with this, and I see a huge opportunity come November to make things a lot better.
Any further discussion, or not, we'll take a vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
So, the motion from Councilmember Garcia, seconded by Mayor Sid, to not fill the two positions that he spoke about earlier, and to fill one additional officer. Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Oh, and take the balance from the sinking funds.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruano.
No.
Councilmember Moreira.
No.
Councilmember Diegues.
No.
Councilmember Collazo.
No.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Sid.
Yes.
The motion fails.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other motions, and then we'll get into any closing, closing words that everybody has to say about their vote, and we'll close this out. But any particular motions we're gonna take up right now?
I'm just gonna, uh, move to call the question.
So, sorry, Councilmember Diegues, we couldn't hear you.
That I moved to call the question.
Ho- ho- hold on, hold on. I'll take a point of personal privilege, without debating it. So, I do have closing arguments, and I'll use my, my point of privilege to, to, to do that, and you guys can, can supersede me. So, I'm gonna be.
Well, I do have a point of order to the attorney or parliamentarian really quick on that, because.
So, we talk about collegiality all the time. All I've, I'm not gonna make any more motions. I do wanna say closing statement.
No, but what I'm saying.
The other day, I'll give you an example, and I'm fine with it. The other day, when Councilman Collazo had asked, hey, one of you guys are out, we're gonna take a vote, we stopped the meeting till you guys came in. I'm not gonna vote on anything else, I just wanna add closing arguments as to how I'm gonna vote. That's it, I'm not gonna make, I'm not gonna make, I'm not, I'm personally not gonna make any other motions. So, on a collegial standpoint, that's all I ask.
Well, again, with, all the same, it's a point of order to the parliamentarian, and I just wanna hear his response to that.
If you're, if you're calling the questions, that's ending debate and asking for the vote to be taken. That's, that's correct. I just said, it's correct. If, if he's calling the question, it's for a vote to be taken.
So, I, I wanna put on the record, the mayor asked if there were any other motions to be heard, and then we were going to have closing comments, so I did not proffer a motion, because I, I was under the impression that I was going to have an opportunity for, for, uh, closing comments. If the only way that I can do that is by making a motion, I would like the opportunity to proffer a motion. It's, it's up to you, you called the question. If you, uh, if you wanna retract your motion, that's fine. If, if nobody wants to hear my comments, that's fine, I'll, I'll save them for next year.
I have a follow-up question to, to the, the attorney, and this is why I don't think it's such an issue, right? Calling the question, vote on it, and then if people wanna take their point of personal privilege before we adjourn the meeting to explain the vote that you just took, it's all the same.
You are, you are correct.
Yeah, so it doesn't affect collegiality, doesn't affect anything else. So, that, I just wanna make that clear, uh, for, for my colleagues.
Alright, Madam Clerk, please call the roll, and I hope it gets voted.
So, Councilmem, this is a motion by Councilmember Diegues, which was seconded by Councilmember Collazo, motion to approve um, item six B, ordinance in second reading. Councilmember Diegues.
Yes.
Councilmember Collazo.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
No.
Councilmember Ruano.
Yes.
Councilmember Moreira.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
No.
Mayor Sid.
No.
The motion, it's second, ordinance in second reading passes.
I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege, uh, though, and explain why I voted no on the, uh, on the last three budgets, eh, for our, for our town. This budget hurts the next generation of Miami Lakers, it makes it more difficult for them to stay here. It does not add value across the board, did not add police officers. We talked about righting a wrong, what it did was defund, moves, move money arounds for something that was never a wrong, the whole LPR issue. You, all you gotta do is talk to Helen Costa, very intelligent attorney, Maribel Balbin, Homero Cruz, all these people. They live there, they, they're the ones that voted on it, recommended to us. Secondly, another one, one of the reasons I voted no, having yearly colas without performance is destroying the culture in town hall. I, I get it, big bureaucrats love the colas, and our manager loves them, but without performance, you're really harming our culture. We, there are employees who go up above and beyond, and I do know they feel bad, because they get compensated the same as the one that leaves at five o'clock, and it's inherently unfair to pass a cola without performance. Adds immense amounts of long-term liabilities, unfunded liabilities. Eh, to this day, nobody's made a, 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 a real substantive discussion or perspective on as to why we have high-paid manager and a deputy manager, eh, with thirty employees, and, and eight of those being crossing guards. I can go on and on and on, obviously, the three percent did not pass, we would have insulated our, our seniors. One of the points that Councilman Collazo made was about slicing and dicing here on the dais, and this goes to you, Mr. Manager, one of the most disappointing moments of my time here on, on the dais, is months ago, I asked for staff to analyze a three percent cut. Very similar to how Councilman, and it passed, very similar to how Councilman Moreira asked for you all to find money for the LPRs, and you did. You were very, you went around, you looked for it everywhere, and you found it for him. Obviously, he's in the majority, so you found it for him. I asked for it, and what you came back with was, number one, the veterans parade. And to me, that was extremely disappointing as an elected official, who's been up here, up here for twelve years, and instead of, and it wasn't of me asking it by myself, it was a vote of this dais. To the point where even, I think the Laker fell for it as well, and put it on, on the front page, something like that, where and it goes back to as to why this dais before, why I asked for a budget committee, why I wanted people, I guess, to look at these things, because my items weren't getting treated the same. Councilman Moreira passes LPR issue, you find the money, you looked everywhere, you found the money. I passed it, first thing you said, let's cut the most important, eh, eh, event in our town's history. No phone call, no email to give me a heads up, no, hey, look, these are the things I'm gonna recommend, what do you think? Or let's think outside the box, none of it. And I get it, this council allows it, but I could tell you, I am beyond disappointed with that. It was a request that I didn't make directly, that I made in a transparent fashion, in a collegial fashion, and you heard Councilman Collazo's, um, discussions that, and that we're up here slicing and dicing, I purposely put my eye to months before to do that. So, voted no for the third year in a row, a four-three budget. Councilman Diegues, you're well within your rights, man. But I've gone above and beyond to try to be collegial with you, with everybody I asked. I don't know if anybody else had motions, but that's all, that's all I gotta say. Eh, have a good night, and this meeting is adjourned. God bless. And go to the mayor's gala this weekend, I hope to see a lot of you there.